Okay, it's 6:00 PM. I'll call the meeting to order. Clerk, may I have a roll call and an establishment of a forum?
Mary Beth Shaw.
Here.
Barbara Stotts.
Here.
Mary Wagner.
Here.
Matt Crowe.
Here.
Dylan Helmanstein.
Here.
And I'm here as well.
All right, I have a group of posting. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
So moved.
Any discussion? All right, here we're done. Mary Beth.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yep.
Angie.
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Public input. All right. Two individuals set up for public input tonight. Just a review, this is not a time where the board can comment or engage in dialogue, but it's your time to have the floor and share with us any concerns you have. For board policy, it's two minutes. So I guess we'll start. Amber, if you want to stand up and just for the record, say your name and address.
Barbara, can I ask questions of you or?
We can engage, but you can sure share the questions and then respond later via different channels. I will say normally, if it's not on the agenda, we can't speak on the topic whatsoever, but tonight Craig does have 4K under his report and so there will be further discussion on it. If you want to stick around here, further board discussion on it.
I'm Amber Brings. My address is 8404 Str. Blue Mountains, Wisconsin. I did speak with Craig earlier, so I do have more of the details on the 4K open enrollment. I just wanted it to be known that this affects more than just kids going into the open enrollment system for 4K because if I can't send my daughter to 4K, my son will also get pulled to go to a different school district. And just talking to the few families that this does affect, not speaking for them, but if they were to decide to pull all of their students as well, that's 15 kids in just elementary school alone because I can't be in two places. I can't go to two school districts at the same time. I love this community. I wanted to be in this community. I drive to and from school 11 miles one way twice a day just to join this community. And to basically be told that my daughter isn't benefiting the school system enough to let her in here is kind of, it hurts honestly. And to fight this hard to try to get my kid into the school system that I love and I love the community and I'm very involved in it, it is kind of a slap in the face to us kids, us parents that are that dedicated to the school system. However, I did speak with Craig and I do have the details on why that was voted for and I do understand. I think that if it was more publicly known of this issue to give other parents sides of those things and other inputs on the information, the board might have voted in a different direction. So when it actually affects our kids being able to come to school, I think it should have been more publicly known that this was even being voted on because I had no idea that it was voted on in January every year. So that's what I got.
Thank you. Cherry? Natalie, stand. Share your name and address with the board, please.
I'm Natalie Deal, 222 Crocker Street, Maison A, Wisconsin. I'm also here to speak on behalf of looking for a compromise of this 4K enrollment that Amber alluded to. First off, thank you, civic servants. I feel you. I know that you've probably spent time discussing this and you're wondering, why didn't you guys attend a meeting when we were talking about this a million times already? I'm feeling that hard. But I also feel as being a public servant compromised, right? New policy as of January. It sure was thought about thoroughly, but yes, there are several parents looking at having kids that are already in the district and that want to enroll, open enroll 4Kers. I guess in my opinion, why not have a compromise? Why not have an exception when eventually that exception will be a moot point, right? So you've got a second grader going to open enroll a 4K. Five years from now, somebody with a eighth grader is most likely not going to open enroll 4K. So would you be dealing with this exception for, and you guys have the data, I know what you do. Would you be dealing with it for five years, six years? How many families does that look like? And you know, perhaps I'm the number one cheerleader for Wisconsin Heights and that is a small town and they'll be kind of listen to individual families and their concerns. And I'm hoping that everybody just keeps an open mind with it. I know it's not on the agenda, but that I come and say my piece. I've got no dog in this fight. I just know, you know, and you know, I've gotten my share of opportunities to compromise and I really think that results always are positive. So thanks for listening to me. Keep up the good work, you guys. We appreciate it.
Yeah, and thank you for coming. You're a lot to us. All right. Moving on, two minutes in payroll. Do I have a motion to approve Board of Education meeting minute of April 22nd, 2024?
So moved. Sorry.
Any discussion? Here we're done. Mary Beth.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yep.
Angie.
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Do I have a motion to approve the payroll approval slash dispersement?
So moved. Sorry.
And any questions on those? Okay, here we're done. Mary Beth.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yep.
Angie.
Yes.
I vote yes as well. All right, for the board president's report tonight, I need to just make note of our board vacancy. Cindy Byteam unexpectedly had to move out of the district and is currently residing out of the district as of May 1st. So we accepted her resignation the last day in April and we will be posting the vacancy in the Star News on Thursday. And any person eligible must provide their letter of interest to the district office by May 30th by 4:00 PM. So again, anybody interested can look at that posting and upon getting the letters of interest, we'll contact the applicant and set up an interview schedule. Second thing I'm going to make note, I spent the day at Elkhart Lake cheering on our racing team today. And so I took some pictures and videos to share with the group. Just going to make note real fast to say extra thanks to Mr. Hopper, Ben Schuss, and Camden Stoppelberg. Those three are just incredible mentors and leaders of this group, most importantly. And their physical, hands-on guidance, but also just the social support is really cool to see. So this was obviously the group before they left school loading up the car on the trailer. And they're already, you know, when they get around these other schools and see what other schools have now, they're already, they're dreaming big here. So everybody's innovating, how does fundraiser? How can we get bigger trailer and this and that? And you can definitely see the sparks flying, so. So they lined up, yep, along the fence and I guess the pit crew in action. And like most things, they would exit the track and something would happen to go wrong. So they'd have to go back to the tent and all brainstorm and take the cap off and fix it. A lot of opportunities for teamwork and. Pretty sharp looking car though.
Very cool.
The last time.
I want to play out the face cam.
Right. I love it. I'm pretty there. Very nice. And this is forced. They refused and I made them. It gets here. And then during the morning, each student had to perform a safety check and they had to show that they could exit the vehicle within 15 seconds in case of a fire. So every student had to go.
Did he intentionally throw the wheel off?
Yes.
I was wondering.
Yes, you had to pull off. Yep, you have to pull it off. There's not a lot of room in there, so.
I'll figure it out.
The sound adds effects. Yeah, it does. I know, is that it came back smelling like a lawnmower? It was mainly the teams and the chaperones. And so today, everybody got to race it and so they were having mid-time trials. What's funny is some of these freshmen and sophomores, they don't have their driver's license. So they have a blind car of any kind, so.
This was their first vehicle experience.
Yep. Yes.
That's great.
Awesome experience and Hopper set up like a wonderful weekend. They're staying at a local summer camp and so the teams all kind of bunk together. So talk about, you know, a nice collaborative group where they're meeting people and learning things. Obviously their first go at it, they're already, wow, to be safer, we can do this, to be faster, we can do this. So just really outstanding and again goes to what can start from nothing. Because Mr. Hopper has even saying, somebody sent him the email, we should have a racing team. This is what goes into it. And he said, delete. And then he's like, four weeks later, I was out fishing in the middle of nowhere. I'm like, oh, I should really go back to that email. And so he did and obviously a lot of time, effort, and energy by a lot of people funding, but really cool. Something that started from nothing, so fun to share on that. Do you want to start or do you want to finish?
I'll start. Thanks for going that way today. That's pretty cool stuff. First of all, Melissa Winters, why don't you stand up, Melissa? We've got a guest with us. Melissa is our new activities director starting July 1st. Going to put you on the spot. Anything to say?
No, I'm just happy to be here, really excited to join the team and I'm going to come visit on Thursday afternoon. So I'm really excited about that. And yeah, thanks for welcoming me.
Great, thanks for being here.
Thanks for the comments. Yes, absolutely.
A couple of things here. First, you know, it's unfortunate, but we have to, you know, recognize the issue that happened in Monroeb. Oh, what, two weeks ago now? You know, it's every one of our greatest fears. It's the fear of every parent. You know, we send our kids to school each and every day, first and foremost believing that they're going to be healthy and safe and they're going to return home. And when these issues happen, unfortunately, we step back and say, oh goodness, you know, what's the difference between Monroeb and Wisconsin Heights when this happens? Nothing. And all of a sudden, it's 10 miles away and it gets a little bit closer to home. So yeah, I feel for the community and certainly Superintendent Steve Salerno. I think did a great job in a very difficult situation. But then we always step back and say, okay, you know, how does this affect, you know, what about us? You know, what do we do? It was 10 miles away, I thought. Like a phone came in, a call in from Dale and I think I didn't answer. Barb was actually in my office, ready to grab the phone because when a principal calls, you typically answer the phone. And then Beth stepped in and said, why no? I, this, this is what it's going to be. And then Dale moved on because, you know, we're in action. And then first thing I thought, do we need to shut down? I got Officer Cartman on the phone. Before I could get, he was busy because Barb actually had him on the line.
I know.
We understood very early on that the situation was neutralized. And then we met administratively and of course, there's a lot of chitter chatter at the schools. It's amazing what kids hear through their social media and how inaccurate that information is. And of course, it gets people riled up. So we immediately put our heads together and put together a communication to our staff and then to our parents. We met administratively afterwards to say, okay, you know, it's 10 miles away, could, how does this affect us? Each and every time something happens here in these situations, you step back and look at what you're doing. And we've been talking about school safety since I've been here. I think my first meeting was with Dale in the Dane County. We have a task force that we met and, but it's, you know, it's time to step back again and take a look at it. We'll certainly put that in Michelle McGrath's front burner in terms of, to review. But what we do, and I can remember back in Columbine, I was a high school principal at Gillette and Crambleau. We'd just never heard of this before. Well, I certainly didn't. And then you forget about it until the next time. Well, we don't forget about it. It's out there. We constantly take a look at processes and procedures. It's something that we just have to do more often. We just have to do more often. What does that mean? I'm not sure. But it's a scary thing, so. We will continue to look at what we're doing here at Heights and continue to do the best that we can to keep our children safe here in school. The other is the issue that was brought up at open forum here. The 4K issue's been discussed. Well, I think we started discussing this when I was probably interviewed in August. You know, we've got a new 4K program, second year of an all-day 4K. Quite frankly, I'm not familiar with all-day 4K. I thought this is awesome and I believe all-day 4K is awesome. There are some issues, however. This year alone, when we had, we're overcrowded right now. And I know that the community or the school board thought through this over the past couple of years and for a number of reasons went to 4K, all-day 4K, all good reasons. But there's some things that weren't thought through that, which is like any new program. You implement a program and then you find out, you know, what's working and if there's improvements needed, you work towards that. That said, when we got to January, statutorily, we need to determine how many open seats we have in regular ed and special education. Each school has to do this and you literally have to put numbers in there. We have, we opened up regular ed except for 4K, which means if you're in fifth grade, you have an opportunity to open enroll. We don't limit our seats because we believe we have enough flexibility to do that. 4K, we closed. We didn't close it. We put down zero seats because this year we were overcrowded. And you get to a point in, just primary education in general, when you, we, 4K, we like to keep, our optimum, our optimum number is 15 to one, which means, well, what is, if you get 16? Okay, 17. You know, sooner or later, you say, you know, 26. Somewhere in there, it's like, no, we have to hire a new teacher. And when you hire a new teacher, whether it's 4K or first grade or second grade, now you want to increase your enrollments because then if you had a situation, and I'm just pulling out general numbers, and maybe if you're, if you're at 15 to one, but you're really at 23 to one, you hire a new teacher, now you're back down to 12 to one, which sounds great, but that comes with an expense. So you get to that limit, do we bring another staff member in or not? And of course, oftentimes in smaller school districts, because you have less flexibility how you move people around. Large districts, sometimes you would be moving students from an elementary to another elementary, which isn't fun either, but at least you've got, you know, various spaces there. But when we don't have those issues, it gets very challenging. So we made a decision not to have any openings based on a number of factors. Students that have been coming in in general for open enrollment in 4K, the majority go back to their home schools. We only get aided 0.6 on our 4Kers. Kindergarten through 12, we get aided 1.0. So we don't get full financing on our 4Kers. So when they come here and if they choose just to do it for one year because it's all-day 4K and the district of home descent doesn't have it, why not open enroll? What's interesting, you can't open enroll into a school district if your own school district doesn't have the program. So I, well, 4K is 4K. Whether it's halftime or it's all-day, it's just 4K. So if we offer a program that another school didn't have, they wouldn't be eligible for, or we wouldn't have to accept them or they wouldn't even be eligible for that. But that said, when you're overcrowded, which we are, you make a determination, Dale and I had several conversations, are we going to hire a new teacher? Well, where's that coming from? And then we're hiring a new teacher for students that are coming from another school district. We don't get aided on those students and the majority go back to their school district. But the students that are residents are in an overcrowded classroom that we're making more overcrowded. Our EAs are stressed, our teachers are stressed, and our specials, art, music, and Fayette. So what Dale will have to do is double up students going to music class. Well, that gets very challenging for the music instructor, for Fayette and for art, when you have double the amount of four-year-olds in your art class. So not knowing what our numbers look like next year because we don't have, we have limited data. You know, we generally know in sixth grade how many fifth graders are coming. Yes, a couple of people might come and go through open enrollment. Families may leave, families may come in. Generally speaking, you've got your core groups of people. 4K is off the board. I don't have those numbers of Dale. We were playing with, but 42, 50, I mean, they just go like this. Last year was up, the year before was down, the year before was following a year of COVID. That makes sense. Some people just plain flat out don't go to 4K. Don't have to. And they show up at kindergarten. We didn't know they were even in our district. We'll have students come to school the first day of school and we'll have 4K parents come with their children saying, we're here, school's open. Oh, can you come back and, can you come back tomorrow? And they get angry. Well, we're just, it's first day of school. We've got a lot going on. We don't know how many 4Kers are going to show up in our own district until the first day of school and it could linger on there. So we made a decision, no, no seats are available based on what we know this year. We had extensive conversation about allowing parents that have siblings in the school to come into the school district. Extensive administratively. Over the course of two months, we've discussed it here and at the end of the day, I'm the one that said, we have a stress program right now. If we open up additional seats for 4Kers, we could have a stress program again next year. It could be more stressed. We just don't know that right now, which means we'd have to hire another teacher. And there's an expense to that. And so we voted, we recommended zero in 4K and we recommended zero in special education and the same reasons. We are. I don't want to say we're understaffed, but our caseloads are heavy right now. And so our special education team has all it can do right now to work with the students that we have. And if we take on other students that are at higher cost, that comes out, that comes under the school district. And when you open it up to siblings, siblings should take everybody. And this is not about wanting to pick and choose who gets to come to school here. It's difficult. It's difficult to say, we aren't going to take any special education students. Sounds awful. It's a financial decision. If we take on additional special education students, we have to hire staff. We can't fill the positions that we have currently for special education and public education. And this is an issue in all school districts. So that's where, that's how all of this occurred. That's where we're at. I understand we have, and then it was, you know, it was quiet. And then of course, I understand people are busy and not paying attention to a whole bunch of things. I get that. But now we've got some phone calls coming in. It's like, but wait a minute, can't you make an exception for a sibling? We can, but you have to do that at the time of open enrollment. You can make an exception. You can say, we will accept zero special ed or 4Kers unless they have a sibling. That can be done next January. Can't undo that right now. There's anything you can do about that. But then you open it to all students. You can't then just say, you can't deny if you do that. That's where we're at. I understand the concern of two kids in school, different schools. I've got whole kids out. I, I don't have an answer for that. The only thing the district could do, and I'm not suggesting you do this, and Dale and I just learned this, after the open enrollment date of June 15th, there's alternative placement or applications for open enrollment. And there's, it cites different reasons why. But there's no process, there's no procedure. The district could say, well, we'll accept students in 4K now. But you don't have a process, you don't have a procedure. The only reason you can do that, and here's the fine line, and it's wrong, because parents can't appeal it. Well, we'll take you, but not you. Why? Well, because we made that decision. They can't appeal it. So one would argue it's unethical, but it's legal. Now, that said, if our enrollment comes in lower than expected and we won't know that, you know, for a while, the district could say, we'll take 4K, 4K students that are interested in coming. I would say you take all or none though, because otherwise you've got to decide why this person and not that person. And that could be discriminatory, that could be unethical, that could be a lot of things, but they can't appeal it. DPI wants that language changed. There's flaws in the open enrollment language, but if the DPI gets in front of the legislature, who knows what's going to come out of it, folks? It doesn't bode well. You know, anytime open enrollment gets in front of the legislator, doors keep opening up and local school districts have more problems implementing this stuff. So that was something that you may want to consider in the event your enrollments of our own students are low enough where adding students is not going to create an overload. And we just don't have the answer to that right now. We don't know how many of our locals, because parents are still deciding if they're going to send their children to. Some people don't want to go to all-day. They just want the half-day. So if there's not an option, they'll say, I'll keep my child at home again for another year. And so we just don't know until we get, every month that goes by, which isn't a great answer, we know more. The closer we get to, you know, August 1st, the clearer our numbers are in all of our classrooms. But that's the best I can say. There's a doggone thing you can do about it right now as we sit here. You couldn't change anything if you wanted to. It would not be legal. Questions?
So it's possible for us next January to set a policy where there is selection based on siblings being in the district or other things as well.
Yes.
Yep. But we need to make sure that be clearly non-discriminatory and against protected classes or everything else that we cannot discriminate against.
Yes, you could have. Yes, you could have that policy, yes.
And this also is not the end of the conversation about 4K at this district.
Well, and that's the part that's hard about this, is we have been talking about the programming since its origin. It was founded by Esser dollars, and so free money, new program, it's an easy sell. But with the change in administration and change of knowledge and updates in knowledge, we were, and to your point, committed to making data-driven decision-making, we weren't in a position to say, "This is not working, we have to cut it." You have to give it the time to be able to measure the classes now in second grade. Are we seeing any improvements academically? Weighing the risk and rewards of stressing the system, operational logistics, compared to our funding mechanisms? I mean, so it's a whole conversation that we're a couple months from having. So this is really the teaser, we're up till in the couple months, we're going to be looking at the funding sources, what does it cost when we only get aided 0.6 in the overall system? When the specialist teachers are doubling up and the stress and, you know, paying them and staffing and all that kind of stuff? So this is really only the teaser to our conversation about the programming as a whole, but it certainly is in aspects, the open enrollment and those that open enroll siblings and fit into the larger picture. So yeah, within the next month or two, we'll certainly make more of an attempt to market and broadcast to people that they tune in and are engaged, because we have been talking about this very fluently. So yes, not the end by any means.
Yeah, I would just piggyback as a statement that I think the board has been excited about 4K. I mean, when we had the opportunity to create that with the Esser dollars, that's where we want to put the money. In fact, I made the motion, I wasn't the second, I always am. I made sure I made the motion on that, and I, so I think 4K was really important and something that was going to be unique to our district. But in some ways, it was a victim of our success in the sense that, wow, this is really popular. And now we have to make cuts, and I, like, I work in healthcare in the hospital, where, you know, I have a certain number of patients a day, and then when I exceed that, especially with the sick ones I had last week, like, I'm just putting my finger in the dug trying to keep them afloat. If I'm like way over how many I can take care of in a given day, it was a 15-hour day last week, and it was crazy. And I, so I do have a lot, you know, for the teachers that have to deal with an overcrowded class, I think we hit a limit. It's hard to make those cuts though. I mean, I hate to think that we have to, like, say no, you know? I mean, it is something that put a lot of thought in, but we, at a certain point, had to make a decision on that, and that's kind of where we were with it. But it is a real important thing to us as a board, I think.
We used a portion of our dollars for Esser for 4K. Other districts, a lot of districts use Esser dollars. And the Esser dollars are gone now in September, I believe. And I read an article on Friday about the concern across the country, about the potential of an unprecedented number of strikes that are going to occur this year across the country, teacher strikes, because the money's gone. And so now it's post-COVID, and, you know, it's, I had an old superintendent that never believed in grants, "Don't bring grants, because when you have a grant, you create a program, the grant money's gone. Now, the community expects you to keep the program. Well, where's the money going to come from? We'll find it, but it comes from somewhere else." That's what's happening, part of that's here. The Esser dollars are gone, therefore, we created a program that's being funded by our fun town, and that money has to come from somewhere else in other people's budgets. And that's happened across the country.
And when you said, "That's also part of the reason we had to raise the referendum a little bit from what had been, you know, we raised, when the 2 million one ran out, the new one was more than it was the last time, partially because of this, right?"
And we're just trying to be intentional about our decision-making, and it was kind of, it just hit that point though, to even get us another year of sustainability, the class size would put the program and the stress on the system. So even to get one more year of data, capping the open enrollment is what's the viable option at this point, to even get us some more data. So we sympathize, because every one of those decisions is really hard, and you hear from the staff, and operationally, their logistics, I mean, it's really hard decision-making. So we sympathize and appreciate the feedback. And again, we'll take that into account as we talk about the programming as a whole in the next couple months.
Just that, I think that you did bring a consideration I wasn't thinking of before to us with public comments, so thank you for coming, and as we go forward to keep doing that. I think what's hard is when you're a school district, and it's not different from other things, but there are state laws and federal laws that really take away your ability to compromise sometimes. And it's not fair, and we wish that it was different setup for us to be able to do it. But I thank you for coming to public comment, for bringing that perspective.
Definitely does help to hear from people how it affects them on an individual basis, whether it's good or bad, and it helps us make our decision.
Do you have anything else?
That's it. No seller? I, you know what?
I forgot, no, I forgot to tell you, I did not get a hold of work today, but I did call Rod from Nichols, and he said, "What they're waiting on is for school to get done so they have a chunk of time to do their outage." Because they need, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They need a full, good chunk, 10, 15-hour day to do an outage. To run the electric. They shut the entire grid down. So from that vantage point, I know that's one thing we're waiting on, and that can't happen until school is out, is what he gave me. But I did not, I'm not able to get a hold of work either, so that's the only thing.
Makes sense.
Nobody works Saturday, Sunday. Good?
Yep, thank you.
All right. Liz?
It's May, middle school, high school, and so if you looked at the list of upcoming events, there's a lot of activity, a lot of moving parts. If you are free on Friday and would like to sub, feel free. I have 14 people out of the building, so, yeah, baby. So it's going to be all hands on deck this week. But kids are busy, they're, you know, finishing up a lot of things, and going to places, they have our racing team, for example. Outdoor sports, did kayaking today, we have kids going to Heartland Village this week. Seniors, last day's on Thursday, they're traveling on Friday. Field and couch classes are going to Devil's Lake on Friday, so it's just busy. Seniors have scholarship night this week, Wednesday at 6:00. And then next week, we practice on Thursday, and they graduate on Friday night. Yeah, winding down the school year, but a lot of things going on.
Congratulations on your board.
Yes, congratulations. I feel like we should read it out loud, so it's on the video, if you listen. It says, "Through AWSA's partnership with the Wisconsin Center for Educational Research, you have been identified as one of Wisconsin's most impactful principals due to the exemplary academic achievement and re-broth that you are leading over several years for students in your school." So congratulations.
Any other questions?
Is there a new update for how many of the apprenticeship students are interested?
We have, right now, 22 applicants. And I want to say 17 or 18 have gone through the necessary steps to move on with that process. So you guys have kept me grounded on that.
Awesome.
All right, any other questions? Thanks, Liz. Kelly?
All right, I wanted to share a very important process that's happening that we do every five years, where we are pulling a lot of data and really evaluating our procedures, our policies, our programs, and making decisions for students, and making sure that we're updating current trends and policies to meet needs of all, in a very equitable way. So when that report is drafted, please review it and take the time to give feedback and look at how the sense that goes with it. Takes a lot of input from a lot of people, and it would be great to have suggestions moving forward. In special education, we have a huge, exciting change, but we'll get to that one soon. In general, we're just working on making our best plans for the 24, 25 caseloads and solving puzzles with schedules and allocating our support, so that's been great. Middle school, high school, and elementary, so a great job working together to make drafts with the knowledge that it all shifts over to summer. And then, a couple other things for student services, we love having that intern. I know he has another project on the books for this week. And it was thrilled to see the work that I reviewed this year for access for our students that are financing English students. That was really exciting to see that grow and see the students showing more mastery in the English language. And then finally, keep pushing summer school if you want to. We're just about done ordering supplies, and the maps are getting done, and we are, we're in great shape.
When, will that draft come out, what's the timeline?
Early next week.
Oh, wow, okay. And then, kind of relating to the caseloads, not that I understand how they work, to be fair, but is there a general increase in caseloads this year? Is it stable, or what is it?
It's definitely an increase this year. We had several students that looked into the district, several new students qualified. Our caseloads are definitely looking hype, which we can see through the addition of some long-term subs, VA positions, things like that. So that changes and shifts how we respond to our students, how we write those IPs, how we schedule things within our different programs. They just increased.
Anything else for Kelly?
Thank you.
Dale?
Thank you, Barb. I'll mention, I'll start with a grant that doesn't really go away, you know?
There is one.
But just to update, the Endowment Committee met last week. We had, well, $14,000 in requests. One of the first years the committee actually had to, you know, make some decisions. But we're able to approve nine platinum-y grants, totally over $11,000. So it's our biggest award that we've had, I think, you know, prior years it was more, like 7,500. So we're excited about that. So I haven't, we haven't even informed who received the grants yet. So started working on those over the weekend, hope to get those out in the next day, day or two for folks. So thank you to the Endowment Committee and for all the teachers that provided applications. I think we had 12 applications total. So some bigger numbers this year, some bigger grants, so. Thought the process went well, and it was exciting to see some pretty innovative stuff this year, which is a little different than what we've had in the past, so excited about that. And then I listed on the board report just all the main events. We're busy like the middle high school, a lot of field trips happening, it's an exciting time of year. We are also trying to plan for next year. In that planning, I'll just let the board know. Sarah came in, our new elementary principal, is actually, she's going to come next Monday, and she's shadowing me for the day, so she's going to spend the day in the district. Should be, that should be a fun day, and an opportunity for her to meet all the staff and set the stage for the summer. Any questions for me?
I was just going to say, maybe she could arrive before 7:30 so she can see drop-off? Am I right?
That's in the plan, she's just, I'm beating her to it. Yeah, it's a Monday, so she can set the cones out, just like I do.
Hopefully James is there so she can see all of his, like, mannerisms.
Oh, then she gets to see my eye rolls, because I get to do drop-off next week too.
She had come to the PTO meeting last week as well.
Yeah, she definitely did.
It's awesome to see.
Yeah. I'll just make note too of all the wonderful off-campus opportunities, because we know Dylan, you made some reference to this before when we were talking about the transportation budget, and just noting how important these opportunities are, and the sustainability too is crucial, so just to highlight those.
Definitely really cool and great for the kiddos.
Mark Calhoun for the 31st, party in park, yeah. That's the old major lines part, so you're always invited.
It's a good time, yeah.
No dump mission?
Let me know what booth you want to run.
Any other questions? All right, thanks Dale. All right, Greg, Derek?
So in our normal report, kind of the year-to-date through the end of April, we're coming in really in line with where our initial budget was. For the most part, you'll see a lot more info in the budget revision later in the meeting, but kind of one item to note is, this was a good miscalculation when we were budgeting. We actually under-budgeted open enrollment revenues by roughly 100,000. So that means we rolled it over from the previous year, but then actually saw an increased number of students coming in, kind of over what we had projected. So that was a great development. So that's, in essence, roughly 12 kids more than we anticipated. So I'm kind of looking at that and re-looking at how we're looking at the open enrollment revenue number for next year, to see if we can get a closer budget number based on having more than a week to kind of look at it and guesstimate it based on the historical numbers. Other than that, we've kind of been working on getting the budget revision ready for the board, 24, 25 preliminary budget, which we plan to bring to the board on the June 10th meeting. So we can have that well in advance of the fiscal year starting. And also kind of working to ensure that our assumptions in that budget align with our model we built for the referendum, to kind of ensure we're aligning with the steps by year, kind of, we're not overspending all of our new referendum money in year one, and that sets us up in a poor position years two through four, where people are asking, "What are you doing?" And "Did you even think when you were setting these budgets up?" So we're really trying to be cognizant of that and ensure we're setting the district up for success year one and years two through four in that referendum time period. And then, kind of, and some more upcoming tasks. We also completed the membership audit that the district was so graciously selected for this year. So we completed that. And just kind of doing other year-end preparations for the audit, purchasing clothes out for this year, purchasing setup for next year, all that fun stuff that everybody loves in a business office. So that we can get the emails out from the principals and say, "Hey, your requisitions are ready to enter because that's what staff likes, is here's your budget, and what can we spend it on?" Just, everybody wishes it was a lot more. So do we, but we live in a constrained budget world that is school districts.
I think the audits follow you because you're so good at it. You're a good answer.
We're not putting that on record, Barb. Anybody did it on it, because we don't want to be selected for any more than that.
Any questions from the reports? Okay, all right, thanks, guys. All right, moving on to our district business. 5.1 tonight, employee relations is a focus. Attached here is some handbook updates. Updates I've been sharing with the Teachers Federation and an updated draft will be brought to the school board June 24th for July 1st presentation. So I suppose any questions on any of the updates?
I don't have anything to say unless there are specific questions.
I don't have specific questions, but reading through the handbook as a whole, I think it would be good for us to go through it systematically over the next year, because I think there are things that have come up routinely over the last year that we need to address that weren't in this round.
And I think there are several things that upon a new administration, it is perfect time to kind of work through together and have different eyes now on outside coming in on it. But yeah, it's opportune time to kind of take a look at all that stuff, so.
Handbooks are policy, and what tends to happen with policy, it sits there until there's a, something comes up and you're like, "Oh, pull up the policy." "Oh, that's how it reads." "Maybe we should update that." And then with, with working with Niola policy, they have a, you know, that stuff happens, but they have an ongoing process where you're revisiting parts of that policy on an annual basis. Over the course of three years, you completely go through the policy. Handbooks have, go back to collective bargaining and then post Act Ten, collective bargaining ended. And so the handbook oftentimes reflected collective bargaining. So we go through this school year, for example, and you know, issues come up and we say, oh, I think we should, that should be addressed. And we take it to meet and confer, you know, we let people know this is what we're doing. So it'd be, you know, an opportunity now to step back and say, hey, let's take that whole, take a look at that little policy again next year. Makes sense.
Referral bonus, if you refer, five hundred dollars. Tell your friends I work in our district.
Two thousand. All right then, moving on to our finance. Six point one. Do I have a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five collective bargaining agreement with the Wisconsin Heights Federation of Teachers and base wage increase of four point one-two percent? Questions?
I met with the Federation, Poppin and Gina, thanks for being here. A couple of weeks ago and we had the discussion. At the end of the day, that's all we can, that's all we can negotiate. Not to say that that's not necessarily the interest of people, but that's, or staff members in general. But that is what we have to offer and that's what's in front of us today.
All right, any further questions? Harry Dunn, Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie? Yes, I vote yes as well. Six point two, do I have a motion to approve supplemental and incentive pay for Wisconsin Heights Federation of Teachers for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year? Any discussion or comments on that?
That is supplemental pay, which is outside of the base wage. That is for a handful of teachers per handbook as it relates to longevity pay. And that occurs each and every year. That amount may go up and down a little bit depending on how many people fit into that longevity category.
Harry Dunn, Mary Beth? Yes. Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie? Yes, I vote yes as well. Do I have a motion to approve the CISA contracts for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five?
So moved, second.
Any questions on that?
About what we had them doing last year too or for the dates they're contracted?
Sorry.
For the contract for, I think.
Business services?
Yeah.
Very similar.
Okay.
Yep. That's a separate contract because it's really a daily rate.
Sure.
And that could fluctuate either way.
Harry Dunn, Mary Beth? Yes. Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie? Yes, I vote yes as well. Six point four, do I have a motion to approve the budget revision?
So moved, second.
Okay, Derek?
I had some kind of questions or kind of comments about this, if the board is okay with that. And I already had mentioned the open enrollment revenue. That's kind of the big revenue change. Another fairly, one of the bigger dollar item numbers there was the Source Two Eighty, which is interest income. We had that very conservatively budgeted, so I'm not expecting high interest rate environments forever. So that's kind of, that's why we budget that very conservatively. Moving down to the expense side, the big picture and Fund Ten, I would say a lot of our expenditure savings are coming from unfilled positions. So that were in our initial budget plan are open right now and have been open most of the year. Not all of those positions will remain open indefinitely. So it's not like we have this perpetual savings that we're going to see. So that kind of, sort of cancels out some of that extra revenue and also kind of basically gets us about whole moving into next year is kind of where we anticipated if we took our original base budget, so. That's just kind of one thing I wanted to plug out there is that we don't have two-hundred-and-fifty thousand of extra money available to build into our next budget. It's kind of a one-time savings this year that we were lucky enough to have. Moving on to the Fund Twenty-Seven side, the revenues were down. We didn't get as much kind of anticipated categorical aid from the state. So even though expenditures went down, our district contribution or our district transfer went up. And that is just kind of naturally from not getting as much money from the state sources as we expect.
So that's not due to us having one less student receiving IP services?
No, no.
So they gave us less money, why?
Till it's worth the capital.
Your Fund Twenty-Seven state aid is contingent on what you spent the previous year in two categories, which would be your O elevens, aidable costs and your, or not, well, just your aidable costs, your O elevens. So what happens is you're going to get about thirty percent, maybe a little bit more, maybe it's closer to thirty-one, thirty-two percent on what you spent the previous year for aid this year. And there are a little different categories, but generally that's what you're going to get. So when you, you have to be able to look at what your total expenditures were for twenty-two, twenty-three in order to determine what your, or twenty, yeah, twenty-two, twenty-three, determine what your twenty-three, twenty-four aid expenditures are. So in some ways you're guessing at that when you do that in October as well. That's why it's more than likely that.
And another plug there is that in twenty-two, twenty-three, we also use some PESR funds to kind of supplement our specialized budget. And you get aided fully on those, but then they don't kind of come into the state also aiding those costs as well. So we had potentially aidable costs in twenty-two, twenty-three that were fully aided by a grant that don't get aided by the state, so.
But if they're aided by us this current year, then we will put up aid on it.
Well, it's twenty-four. To make it as clear as mine. Welcome to specialized funding.
That enters to be aided on next year.
Yes.
He's gonna make note of that next year.
I've got signatures for an assembly candidate, so I'm gonna mention, hey, when you're in committee meetings.
Thanks for attending.
Thank you. Thank you.
The rest of the budget revisions, there's not a ton of, the Fund Thirty-eight and the debt service levy, that was a miscue on my part when I originally put it in. We had our levy set at two-point-two million for that kind of, and I just incorrectly entered it in my original budget. Nothing changed from when it was adopted. I just had to kind of update it on my end. Nothing changed overall on that, other than we got a little more interest. So that's kind of where that's coming from. And some of the cost for the defisance kind of being incorporated into that expenditure side.
The other thing, I would just make sure that, you know, when you think about when we're looking at these, these are our best estimates as of April fifteenth or thereabouts. So there's a lot going to change and they are just that. So when you look at your actual, actuals, they will be different than what you're seeing here. Hopefully we're close, or closer than we were in October, but that's what we're trying to accomplish here. The other, I think, big issue is when you, you look at Fund Ten out there and you see those... The score just sound a little bit more about. No more. One more. There you go, your projected funding, ending fund balance there are four oh-seven, oh forty-three. You'll have to make some decisions at some point in time, how it will make those recommendations to you, whether that should be in Fund Forty-Six. You know, there are some other things that we'll talk with Craig about, which will hopefully align and be in your best financial interests moving forward to maximize, you know, aid again for this year. So maybe we can increase that special education aid a little bit for the following year. And certainly if we would put it all in Fund Forty-Six, you would get aided on all of that. But you know, you would either pros and cons of putting it in Fund Forty-Six or you put it in the regular general fund, fund balance. There'll be lots to think about there too.
And I know a lot of districts have specific percentages of fund balance as it compares, compared to your Fund Ten expenditures as a part of their board policy. I've seen that range anywhere from fifteen to no percentage listed. So it's, it says whatever's needed to kind of meet the cash flow needs and prevent short-term cash flow borrowing. So it all depends and it's kind of the board's discretion. Anything thirty-five, forty, forty-five is getting high comparatively to other districts. And that's when taxpayers, legislators and everybody starts saying, why do you need more money if you have this much? So that's also a conversation we'll have together as to what's the appropriate number there and kind of see where the board wants to head with that as well when we're making kind of these year-end decisions and what is the best fit for Wisconsin Heights and as the district.
And I would also emphasize on that projected ending fund balance there. I can't emphasize enough how the unfilled positions impacted that number. It was significant.
One benefit package alone.
You have filled, I think, a majority of those positions already for next year. Is that safe to say? So just keep that in mind and I think people need to know that so they understand that. Yeah, that's just not there because it wasn't budgeted properly or that there was some sort of surplus. That was unfilled positions and that's due to the difficulty in finding staff. Kind of taking care of that issue at this little time.
And then one other kind of final point is we're bringing this because the board has to adopt a budget and revise it throughout the year. And what we're trying to do here is bring a revision to say, here's our best estimate as to where we're going to end the fiscal year at because in statutorily, we can't overspend our budget in a single line item over what you as the board have approved. So we're trying to kind of align it to what we spent and to make sure we're in compliance so we're not overspending over what the board has authorized us to already. So that's why, also why we're bringing revisions.
Thank you for your detail and due diligence. Probably the most budget updates certainly since I've been here we've ever had, so thank you for that. Any questions?
Just for when we talk about whether to put in Fund Ten or Forty-Six, what percentage it would be at if we had Fund Ten receive all of that?
So if the Fund Ten, the ending fund balance ended at six-point-three million, it would be above fifty percent. Because roughly the.
Why, you just asked that question.
And it's not getting aided, correct?
Because roughly the Fund Ten operating expenditure budget is twelve-point-five million. Twelve-point-five, twelve-point-six.
Okay, thanks guys. I have a motion and a second please. Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. All right, moving on, no action is needed on seven point one tonight. So we'll move on to seven point two. Do I have a motion to approve two open enroll students for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five? That's not written right on here, it's twelve.
So there's two and then there's twelve.
There's no action on seven point one?
Correct, no action on seven point one. So seven point two is a motion to approve twelve open enroll out students for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. Okay, any questions? Okay, Harry Dunn, Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. All right, do I have a motion to combine eight point one and eight point eleven?
Gonna make note of Brett Schultz's retirement. We thank him so much for his years of service and, like I said before, I'm committed to making sure he comes back. He certainly will be missed. Also Dan Jurgens, my chemistry teacher. Yes, thanks, Mr. Jurgens, for your years of service. We have Mr. Steiner, who's signing on to help out the strength and conditioning program. Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Highlight, Ms. Schomper.
Big changes.
Big changes, exciting changes.
It is exciting.
Yeah, it's in the program, a much-needed refresher and probably for you as well.
Yeah, I've taught specialized for twenty-five years, so. Twenty, this is my twenty-second school year.
I wanted to say no to it. We can replace you on the other side.
You'll be fine. There'll be plenty of young candidates that want to come in.
But how blessed we are that you're staying with the district.
I'm excited. I'm excited. For the kids especially.
Absolutely, as are they, I'm sure.
They don't know yet. I had to come here and make it like, had to be officially approved. But I haven't told my parents or my students. The whole staff knows, but I haven't told any of the students. My own children know, but I have not told the students I work with or their parents. So that happens tomorrow, as long as it's approved.
Nobody wondered about the summer class, but maybe you're dabbling.
Oddly enough, no. No one even asked me about that. So yes, they're middle school, high school. I don't think they are today.
Your enrollment numbers are gonna stagnate.
Here we go, here we go.
Really excited about that.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, we also have our teacher contracts and appointments for support staff and our manager contracts, administrative assistant and administrator contracts in there as well. Are there any questions on any of those? All right. Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well.
You're good to go.
Okay, good. We're gonna go to dinner now. Which I did not have to make because that was my husband's job. Must remember my mother's sake.
Well, thank you for staying. So exciting. All right, nine point one, the Vanguard Racing team still at it. Do I have a motion to approve a donation of a thousand dollars from Cross Plains Family Chiropractic?
Comments? Harry Dunn, Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Nine point two, do I have a motion to approve a donation of a thousand dollars from O'Reilly Auto Parts to the Vanguard Racing? Awesome. Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Oh, jeez, I lied right on the poll here.
I vote yes as well. Do I have a motion to approve a donation of five hundred dollars from Amen Abazai to the Vanguard Racing team? Did I get that right? Does anybody know? Okay, thank you. Mary Beth? You have? Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yep.
I vote yes as well. Thank you to everybody for their donations and the kids who are persevering and enhancing their, their business skills and their fundraising. Ten point one, future meeting dates, just to take a look. We will not be meeting for Memorial Day meeting and we have the two board workshops now on the calendar for July fifteenth and August fifth. Still yet to be determined what time those are gonna be. Anything else I miss? Sounds good, all right. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yep.
Yes as well. Thanks everyone.